Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the next few minutes for the meeting of June 24, 2015. Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the next few minutes for the meeting of June 2, 2015. Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the next few minutes for the meeting of June 2, 2015.
We were meeting yesterday in Lake County. I had a potato. Our chambers aren't there. Unfortunately, it's a building. Chambers suck. Small, they put their folks that sit in the audience behind a big pole. They don't like Noack. Yeah, they put the audience at one end, can't hear anything. The one in Ashtrude is the one that gets me. The big old courthouse.
Oh, yeah.
Three people sitting here. It's like doing it in a gymnasium or something.
It's cute.
It is.
It's very nice. It's very pretty. Small, quiet.
In your own.
All right. Okay. You have the financial information in front of you. Highlights this week, we have an appropriation transfer from the contingency account for additional hospitalization appropriations for the Treasurer's office. We also have several supplemental appropriations, one for the Thompson Sewer Water Project, one for the Juvenile Probate Clerk computerization, and the final appropriation of the balance in the Engineers' Road in Bridgefront. Within the accou摊s, we have a $11,000 increase to Mission's Communications LLC for the Water Resources Department, and we have a $30,333 contract to Philip Miller Construction for maintenance, for the maintenance department for concrete work at 470 Center Street. In the vouchers, we have two payments. This is again the Thompson Sewer Project, one for $40,000 on Contract A, and one for $63,801.37 for Contract B. Any questions?
Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the next year's resolution number 16-074, itemizing the financials for the meeting of June 14, 2016.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeilbruhm?
Thank you.
I know. I told you, Jessica, I would cover this. So on your next agenda item is Department Aging is requesting the Board approve hiring Reba Dykes for a position of full-time social worker. This is the third position that you agreed to in the budget. She, Jessica, sent me some narratives. Says Reba was initially interviewed by Adam Von Bochsel and Savannah Costera, who are the other two social workers. Reba's very seasoned, has extensive knowledge of the community, as well as experience working with the Amish and mental health population, both an asset to our agency. She's one of the top candidates chosen by Adam and Savannah. And Jessica sat down on the second interviews with the candidates, we're giving her multiple scenarios to navigate. Reba excelled well beyond the other top candidate, can navigate all scenarios ethically, legally, and safely. Says she would be a wonderful addition to our team.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve hiring Reba Dykes to the position of full-time social worker number 1022 to be effective July 11, 2016, at the rate of $18.19 per hour with a one-year probationary period, further requesting up to 10 days of unfilled leave through July 11, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeilbruhm?
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm over the kind word. Only coming just the kind word. Came prepared.
I was like, you weren't this morning. I was like, oh, I didn't see this morning.
That's right. That's right.
We're no longer.
Free to hang around for a while.
Glenn, oh, yeah, sorry. We're here for the request of a new grant for ISP pre-trial, pre-sentence investigation. We've, the county's had this grant since 1996. This grant is used to supplement three employees here in New York, Sandra Gilbo, Jeremy Graham, Rebecca Pease, so. Here for that. There's no county that, so it's a state grant.
The County Police Corps of Adult Probation is requesting the Board approve next week the HAD Department of Acceleration and Correction subsidy grant agreement for community-based corrections programs, non-residential misdemeanor programs for fiscal year 2016, for the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, in the amount of $115,937, $62,402 for intensive supervision, $26,000 for pre-sentence investigation, and $27,535 for pre-trial release within a local match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeilbruhm?
Aye.
You got a rough crowd over here.
Actually, when that conversation was going on, I was looking in to see if we had any problems. The only one is the guy in the back. But he, we know.
Yeah, we got him in the back.
Good morning.
Morning. Gorgeous.
Let's see. Well, Kelly would be here, except she's caught in that storm in the Midwest.
Or she's like in Tulsa or something.
She was in Tulsa. She was supposed to play in the St. Louis and then pop over and everything burns down or rerouted, so she didn't make it. She's crazy, you know. Anyhow, what, her project is actually the deviant in the background.
Yeah. Oh, wow. He didn't hear that. He didn't hear that.
He was referred to as a deviant.
Anyhow, this.
Excuse me? You're just referred to as a deviant.
I always hope that. This is to get permission to advertise for bids for the exit entrance doors for IGL buildings, so, are they approved buildings, so that's permission to advertise.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for bids for the Job County Buildings and Grounds Door E2A renovation project under Grant VA-15181 to be held on Wednesday, July 13, 2016, and 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on June 16, 2016, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
And the next two actions are regards to the formal application that's, will go out at the end of the week. And it's one thing is to execute the resolution, and the other is to execute the anti-displacement and environmental review documentation and certification. So we went over the projects last time. Do you want to go over them again, or are we pretty happy with?
Just to be favoring the fine residential anti-displacement.
Okay. You need me to stretch and give more time. It's a wonderful government document that declares that we're not gonna, in order to do any of these projects, we'll kick somebody out of a house or out of a residence, and if we do do that, then we would pay their rent charges to relocate somewhere else, so.
It's only for government, not for parents, right? She said. She just asked.
We would never take out a project that would require that, but it doesn't matter whether it's a project that requires it, you would have to say that you would do it if you did, so. I'm sorry.
Hey, he asked.
I just want to hear.
I got that.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve next week Resolution number 16-075 authorizing the President and Board of Job County Commissioners to make applications in the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for financial assistance under the State of Ohio's 2016 Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board to authorize the President and Board to execute the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan in environmental review, documentation, and certification form in connection with the State of Ohio 2016 Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle? Commissioner Pfeilbruhm?
Thank you.
Signing here. I was in a Noack meeting that Friday, and the Noack Board, over my objections, voted a $43 million loan to take care of our roads, because they said they didn't have enough money. The very next breath, they were allocating $16 million of money in the bank to take care of bicycle trails, so.
We don't have money to pay for.
We don't have money to pay for pot.
Morning.
Morning. Morning, Krista.
How are you?
Good, sir. Is he?
Yeah.
I don't fill out all of their paperwork stuff.
I have to check. Is there a standard form you fill us out on, Krista, or just?
I don't. It comes to me that way.
It's just aggravating when the signature lines are up in the upper left-hand corner, so's the staple.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, what about all this room down here? Can't we just use this?
Okay, man, let's say something positive. It's a good day. It's not raining, beautiful sunshine out there, it's not snowing.
Well, at least my hands still work, so I can sign, so that's positive. I know there's a pond around here someplace that had a pipe in it about this long. I'm gonna sneak in. You swim with them? Sound like you're gonna sneak in, you're just gonna start swimming?
No, the fish.
Okay, guys, you're on.
All right, the next two items for JFS projects, getting them started. The first one's the upgrade to security around their booth, their reception booth. Remember that all JFS money comes back to us, so if you reimburse us, we can start it and get it going, and the whole works. This is gonna be a great project for their security down there. Don't get too much involved with it. I think this is a good thing. We've got a lot of projects, security projects, courthouse, we've got some other stuff going on. We didn't count, so we're really doing a great kind of security upgrade for county employees. That's the first one. Doing both together, or?
No, they're two separate. Why don't you go ahead and do the first one?
The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve next week the service contract agreement with armored resistance mechanisms incorporated to perform Job and Family Services desk upgrade for the year 2016 in the Mount Natchezee, $35,660.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
You know, I offered to do this yesterday. I was talking to Craig about this, and I said, you know, if you line the inside of that room, that little booth with phone book, you know, that'll stop a forty caliber.
And you could look up numbers.
And so, you know, there's cheaper ways to do this.
You're not finding.
He didn't take me up on this.
You're not finding too many phone books around anymore. You may have to scour the entire country.
When I got here, I asked for one for my office, and we could scour the place to find a current one.
This day and age, you'd just be lining up cell phones.
Yeah. What do you say, Krista?
Well, Glenn brought these great, big, huge monsters tabletop plans to you, so.
Next one is a JFS parking lot. We'll go out for the end, see what we're gonna get into. This one here is, we have the main one for asphalt, and then we'll give it an alter also for to see what it would cost for concrete, what the difference would be.
That's for the whole lot, or just that lower level?
That's for the whole lot.
Whole lot.
That's to expand the.
And to expand.
Number twenty.
No, I think it's forty something.
Forty. Forty something.
Ninety to a hundred.
At some point, I'd like to get the delta between not expanding it and expanding it.
Yeah, to see what the difference is, isn't it?
Yeah.
And like we talked yesterday, I do think, recalling some of our meetings, that the engineer was able to come up with a number, the cost per square foot, which shouldn't be very, you know, difficult, so I think you just take the, you know, the square footage difference, you know, and go within, you know, whatever that number is, and then that would give the difference, so.
The dream shot in these parking lots were that, up underneath, so that was all built way back twenty, thirty years ago, and it's just, we're going in, redoing the base, and putting drainage and everything in with this.
Well, expanding is though, you have to, if you can redo the existing base, which is already there to some degree, second conscious same as completely reopening, opening up another parking lot area, because now you have to take all the dirt out, you gotta bank bill with slag or whatever you're gonna put in.
They're gonna take that base out.
Yeah, I think.
We're gonna take all the base out. It's all lumpy, really soupy and the whole work, so it's just not worth to spend money and put it on something that the foundation's not there. You gotta get rid of that water up underneath it, so. One of the good parts, you know, the hospital also, we did their job, so it's not coming all down on us. That's a good step right there, so we'll keep going with that.
Do we hold them liable for that? Why'd you print that out? They have an issue. It was all created by the hospital.
Go with that, guys.
But no, I mean, and just so, you know, we very much appreciate you guys taking a look at this. We know this has sort of been on the radar for some time, and we just respect the fact that, I mean, we know it's a pricey, potentially pricey project, and we just, at this point, are, you know, looking for bids to see where they're coming at, and then we'll sit back and talk again. You know, we're not talking about going forward with this project without, we just wanna see where the bids are at, and so, and then we'll have another conversation.
Well, the thing is, it's gonna be a lot of money. When it's all done, you're gonna look at asphalt and go, what? But it's, the key to it is that they're gonna remove all the sub-material.
Exactly.
And redo that, and it's like, so many projects, there's a lot of money that you don't see.
Right.
You know, that goes into a project, and so that's gonna, there'll be a certain degree of sticker shot.
Yeah, we're just thankful that you guys are willing to look at it.
Yeah, I applaud you. This helps us a little on this, but I gotta tell you, to be honest, to be very candid with you, I've been over on that parking lot, and I, I mean, come to look at our church parking lot sometime. That parking lot's in pretty good shape compared to a lot of parking lots around, and, you know, I'm not so sure the resurfacing is not, I don't know how that, that one plays off against the other. I mean, I don't see the huge, I mean, I don't see sinkholes in the parking lot and that kind of stuff, so I don't know that the, that the base is as bad as all the claims, and so in my mind, I'm still working through them. And I'm just telling you, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And I'd love to have you, you know, I would mind it, I wanna hear, I wanna do the right thing, whatever the right thing is, but I gotta tell you, and as I look at that over there, you know, there's always cost benefit associated with these things, and we're making other, we're talking about other plans, other alternatives, other options relative to the building and so forth, so we just gotta weigh all those things together.
Yeah.
So this might, this gives us more information, helps us to make a good, more better informed decision, so it's a good way to do so.
No, it's just, I mean, we have, I mean, we invite the public, you know, whether it's children, seniors, disabled individuals, onto our property to come and be served, you know, and so as an invitee situation, you know, we just need to be at least mindful that.
So we invited less people than we could probably pay less, is that what you're telling me? Cost the extra less money, just don't invite them.
We're here to serve.
I'm not thinking the term "invite" is something I would use in your situation, but that's just. All right, go ahead.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve next week the plans on specifications for the Job and Family Services parking facilities improvements and set a bid opening for Wednesday, July 20, 2016, at 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on June 23, 2016, June 30, 2016, and on the county website.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeilbruhm?
Thank you, guys.
Yep, very much.
The next two is for summer help. We got a lot of stuff going on right now, you know, flower beds and everything, so I hope these two, and two more summer help will get us out. I'm also down a couple folks in the department due to medical or other reasons, so I think this really kind of fit us. Got a lot going on, so.
Want to read the two again?
Yes. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve hiring Ann and Stop Check at the time Summer Help number 0101 to be effective June 20, 2016, through September 30, 2016, or the start of school, whichever comes first, at the rate of $8.50 per hour for up to 21 weeks, maximum 840 hours. Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve hiring Kurt Schein to position as a full-time summer help number 0101 to be effective June 20, 2015, through September 3, 2016, or the start of school, whichever comes first, at the rate of $8.50 per hour for up to 21 weeks, maximum 840 hours.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
How do y'all have your day?
Thanks.
There's just two copies of this?
Yes, sir.
Get some.
There's a rubber band.
Oh, okay. All right, buddy. Oh, good, yeah. Did you do that on the job, or playing tennis at the club? Just here.
I was at the roof of the club.
Oh, oh, okay.
I actually watched the land, it's just at an angle, I said, I know it's at an angle, but I'm not gonna straighten it up. I bounced off the ledge. I will, yes, we understand that. Okay, Transit Department requesting a change in our best, in our policy manual best practices to increase our, increase the maximum of our micro purchase from $500 to $1500. And you'll see in the notice here that I referenced the Federal Transit Administration Circular 4220, which allows micro purchases to be at the discretion of the Director about the normal three bid process, that's something that we call. An increase in, because we are the lowest one in the state, as a circular allows us to go to $3,000, I ask for $1,500, I think that's a fair amount that we should be able to decide, no, we do get the exception of paper notices, we do get three quotes and just about every purchase, so.
The Transit Department is requesting the Board approve the limit to the Job County Transit Policy Manual Best Practices for procurement policy, which increases the current micro purchase maximum amount from $500 to $1,500 to comply with Federal Transit Administration Circular number 4220.1, Chapter.
Six.
Micro purchases to be effective June 14, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye. Before I say aye, define for the folks what a micro purchase is. The Federal Transit Administration has basically four levels of purchase. A micro purchase is one, in this case, that's under $3,000, that's at the discretion of the Director and/or the person running the department. A small purchase is between $15,000 and $25,000. That requires certain, certain paperwork and processes for the Federal Transit Administration, generally three, three quotes and three bids. A medium purchase is between $25,000 and $50,000 that has the same applications along with, you have to quote from the federal guidelines for the procurement circular, certain quotes, depending on what you're purchasing for a transit department, whether it's vehicles or something for maintenance of the department or operations. And $50,000 above, you have to go through the regular process. Besides, those previous ones, you also have to put out the request for quotes and for bids, have a ninety-day public hearing.
So for a lot of items, it would cost you more money to go through the bid process than it would to buy it, and so the logic is, when you've got small purchase and micro purchases, then we trusted individuals, Mike and his team and staff and so on and so forth, we trust them, and they're audited, to be able to make certain purchases without having to go through some complicated red tape nonsense and figure puts on. Is that a good way to summarize it?
That's, I would probably use a different word. That's exactly the way to summarize it.
Okay, good. All right, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura? How are you this morning?
Good.
Hello.
Got on the construction site.
Okay.
Well, it's a better day to go on a construction site than some of the days.
The last few days have been.
How are things going with all the jobs? Pretty good?
The summer, yeah, it's very soon, so.
Yeah. And what about for Leview, is that almost?
They're almost across. They were estimated last week, two months to get across, and then must start getting over to Opera Park, so, and then they're gonna go back through and put the release thoughts in. So it really wasn't gonna take as long for your release of work, because that's actually what's in the event.
Right, right.
Working that, because you had to relocate a few of them just because of the location that I'm doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is for Department of Water Resources requesting the Board approve the bid to Jeff Gibson Construction Company for the Russell Park wastewater treatment plant upgrades in the amount of $1,543,900, and they represented the lowest invested. The bid funds submitted shall be held for survey performance by.
I'll make that motion.
And that's what that item did.
The Floyd utilization changed and updated filters and site work to prevent the plant from being flooded out when sugar.
And that was within the engineers asking us to do this?
This one was. We updated the project a little bit when we went out for rebid. We took out some items that we thought our department could do at a later date in-house, or that we could also just do, bid out at a later date if we needed to. So that brought the engineers asking it more realistically, and we did have to bump it up a little bit, but not by much, and the one that Jeff Gibson came in for was actually a lot closer to the original than it here in Estes.
I get a quick second. Okay, we have called the roll. We got a motion and a second.
Commissioner Rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spittle?
Aye.
You guys started and started talking again, so I wasn't.
I didn't hear a motion.
I'm glad you.
I didn't hear it.
Yeah.
Craig gets to come back up again.
Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purposes of discussing the task of animal collar employees and the Department of Job and Family Services.
Hold on one second. We wanna, yeah, we wanna talk, have a conversation with Mr. Markle. Yeah, we can do that if you like. Is that okay with you? We'll take a few minutes? Yeah, we can do that if you like. Is that okay with you? We'll take a few minutes before we go into executive session?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Wasn't, wasn't the agenda?
Right. Um, I, well, you brought us at the last week's meeting up about the sewer tie-in for one parcel for B I P Auburn and, uh, we were contacted to communicate with you about why we were seeking the sewer tap in and I sent people there some emails and hopefully you had a chance to take a look at those. Uh, my client, um, is seeking one tap and only one tap for the property. We were originally going to have a drip irrigation system put in because the soils analysis showed you couldn't put in, uh, standard septic systems on this twenty-six acre parcel and the drip irrigation is expensive, expensive to maintain. There's questions about the efficacy of who's maintaining it, so, uh, and I'm not sure who originated the idea, but, um, we were advised that there was one home tap that might be left on that line, so we made the request of the Department of Water Resources for this, uh, building to center construction. It's a combination of a, a single-family residence with a storage building for my client. He's gonna store, you know, his, his ATVs or his vehicles there and he's gonna have a, a bedroom there and a kitchen and bathrooms and he'll use it sparingly. Ultimately, the plan is for him to build a single-family house either attached to it or in addition to it, either on the twenty-six acre parcel or on the hundred-and-eighteen acre parcel just to the east. There's one other parcel that's twenty-three acres, that's owned industrial. Um, he has no plans for any of the property, but ultimately we assume that that industrial parcel will be sold to somebody who will wanna use it for industrial purposes. Um, he bought it with the intent to conserve it. He's letting it go back to natural conditions. It was a golf course. Um, it was purchased in an LLC based on my advice to my client because there were some issues about environmental uses of the property in the past and so for personal liability, we were concerned that if he put it in his name, that, uh, he could potentially have personal liability should it be discovered that there was environmental problem that we didn't learn about. So that's the only reason why we put it in an LLC. He has no other business reason for that and it wasn't to try and develop, uh, land. Uh, so we're asking for the sewer tie-in. Uh, we don't wanna spend two million dollars to go upgrade the plant, uh, for his, to build his home or to build anything else there and, uh, he's just as happy if the system doesn't get upgraded and it stays the way it is, 'cause he likes having the privacy and doesn't wanna see development there either.
I think the concern, Dale, was the, um, that, the, the question came up last, last week was just the, you know, what, what kind of, uh, door do we open with that, with the, um, you know, just, just the financial burden that it could put on us, but there's only, you know, one, I think, or two tie-ins max that, that, that has available. Then all of a sudden, we're sitting, we're saying, now we need to recreate a whole new planet and our diamond, it would be, it would be hard.
I think there's a tap or two left for the cul-de-sac for, uh, Gottschalk's development. I think that and this house would be it. I was involved with the sewer line when it first went in for all the lakes and represented the original developers. Back then, the idea was that this was gonna serve a limited area and that it wasn't gonna grow and it hasn't. It's served the exact area that it intended to be. And I remember at the time thinking that this sewer line was going on the property, a metro, metro tool on the golf course and that someday they might wanna tie in, but they really wouldn't be able to do it, even, I was thinking in terms of the golf course, because I don't think that their bathrooms for the clubhouse and for the industrial building would have been able to, uh, take, uh, there wouldn't have been enough capacity for them. And when my client bought the property, I gave him the same advice, that you wouldn't be able to buy this and think that you could develop it by tying in these sewers for a number of blocks. And we didn't even know that there might be one tap available for time, so his plan was to build a standard septic system and after he bought it, we found out for the first time that the soils are really severe, uh, and that, uh, you can't put in a standard system. We would've thought on a hundred and sixty or so acres that you'd be able to put in-
Find someplace.
So, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have language? We do have language?
Do. I was preparing in case you were ready to move forward.
I, I have no problem moving this forward.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'm good too. I do have one tangential question. This isn't directly related to that, 'cause you and I talked, had linked yesterday and, um, and so you were talking about the fact that your client wasn't planning on developing any of the golf course and that property, industrial property, setting that aside. Um, we're seeing, um, a huge movement on the part of the Western Reserve Blankets, with conservation easements on property. Uh, I consider that detrimental to the charter count.
Right.
Has your client been talking to you at all about doing that? 'Cause I'm hoping not.
Um, he and I had a discussion about that early on. He had no interest in doing it.
Good, 'cause he owns the property. He can-
Right.
Do any classes.
My, my view, and I think you probably share this, is that if we have too much land and conservancy, we're losing a lot of property tax-
That's right.
Making land unproductive. So you gotta be careful. You want it to be on land that's environmentally sensitive or can't be developed anyhow. And so, um, this land wouldn't qualify that. And if we went to Western Reserve and said, put a conservation easement there and they'd say, do your study, the conservation values that they're typically looking for wouldn't be here, uh, because the site was developed as a golf course and whatever environmental sensitive, uh, areas there may have been, I think were pretty much destroyed, if there were any, by developing a golf course.
Well, even that, I mean, just for the sake of discussion, so you can talk to your client about this, um, anybody that owns the property can conserve it.
Right.
They don't need a third party to conserve it. And the same thing with the park. The parks put a conservancy on the property, but parks own the property. They don't need a third party who's unaccountable to the society, um, to protect it. It's, it's not protecting, it's controlling it and that's my concern. So, you know, I don't have a right to tell them what to do.
No, I, I explained to him that he could get a tax benefit from the conservation easement. He said, you aren't interested in-
Good. That just gets me more comfortable. So I'm, I'm good if you will.
I mean, I'm not, I, I don't wanna say we're totally against conservation, it's just that it's in the right place, you know, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm not against conservation, period. I love conservation. I'm a hunter, fisher, and I like to go out and do, but my contention is you don't need this, an unaccountable third party to do that. If you own property, the farmer owns property, he protects it. If the park board owns property, they protect it. They don't need this unaccountable third party you don't control to protect the property. And so anyway, I just, I wanted to get a sense for you-
Yeah.
Since you're here and-
It was a discussion we had and you-
On the grill, you checked the idea. Good.
And to my knowledge, he has not been approached by any agency to, to cons-.
All right.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and amend the Auburn Township two oh eight water quality management plan converting parcel number zero one dash zero seven two one zero zero on Stafford Road, served by onsite systems to main sewer as requested by the Auburn Township trustees.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell?
All right.
Can you just confirm the parcel number? Wanna make sure we get the right parcel?
Okay.
Yeah, it's oh one, oh seven, two, one hundred?
Yeah.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
I'll be as good time on that one. Yeah, he, he does.
Now we'll be back to, what was sixteen, that was, did we read that?
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board move into executive session for the purposes of discussing compensation and color employees in the Department of Job and Family Services.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell?
Aye, and we're not expecting, or there could be action, we don't know.
Yeah, there probably, there probably will be some action. We'll have Craig Swenson, Paul Ryman, myself. Yeah, look, look serious.
Mark Cameron.
Back at ten thirty-three?
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board, upon the recommendation of the executive director of Job County Job and Family Services, to approve revisions to the following sections of the Job County JFS Personal Policy and Procedures Manual to be effective immediately, classification and compensation plan and care of people in emergencies code.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Smith, um, that, I was gonna say-
Mike, wait a minute, he's not here.
I was gonna say, just for the record, uh, Mr. Spiller, he wasn't feeling well.
Yeah. He gave me the-
We didn't win, tie, he's not tied up in the back room or anything like that.
He gave me pile of turnips.
Wait a minute, okay. I wasn't even paying attention.
Sorry. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board, at the recommendation of the executive director of the Department of Job and Family Services, to approve the recommendation to grant increases in the wages of the employees of Job and Family Services as specified in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen JFS hourly, employee hourly compensation table schedule dated June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, said increases to be effective commencing, um, June nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, which is payroll period fourteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell?
Aye.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board authorize the executive director of Job and Family Services to grant a merit increase to Rachel Tetlow, administrative assistant to step, grade seven, step six, sixteen dollars ninety-two cents per hour in recognition of her meritorious service during the past year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell? Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve the merit increase for, um, Job and Family Services executive director Craig Swenson to step, grade twenty-two, step four, forty dollars sixty-one cents per hour to be effective July first, two thousand sixteen.
Or maybe we should amend that to be effective with payroll number fourteen.
So make it that, that?
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be the June nineteenth, two thousand sixteen-
Yeah.
Um, payroll number fourteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your, uh, continued support for what we do. Very much appreciated and input and the tough questions and appreciate it very much. Thank you for all your guidance.
Yep.
Thank you.
See you in a second.
Yeah, see you in a little bit.
Tell Nancy I was here.
I will.
That's all.
That's all.
Thank you.
This is back to what was seventeen.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution number sixteen dash zero seven six establishing the location and time of the July seventh, two thousand sixteen-
What, what, what is?
Of the board of county commissioners to be held at the-
What is, what, what does he say, you know?
And begin at eight thirty A M.
Make that motion.
Commissioner Harv?
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell?
Uh, regarding, um, I'll be a buck out. Uh, I, did I say anything else back to you there? Okay, um, I looked at you. I was looking at you or two ago. Um, we looked, I looked a lot in, I looked a lot into it, but the issue, yes, the issues with it is it's one-time money and you can't do brick and mortar. You can't do anything, so you're supposed to use it to, to develop or implement-
Commissioner's office is requesting the board agree and execute the letters to Senator John Ecklin, Representative Sarah Lawson, Representative John Patterson, and Senator Free Caparo regarding the proposed mandatory accreditation for all local health departments.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Right, but then how are you-
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
The same thing comes back, is you can bolster, you can only bolster it.
Aye.
One second.
You know, like, you can't rely-
It seems like you might be watching this video, by the way. This, the coordination is gonna cross our county, possibly the health department, at very least. It'll, uh, result in huge increases according to our health director, so everybody should be calling their representatives and, uh, expressing concern. They have a concern. Acts is going up or there's a health department.
And I looked through all the minutes and everything that we're talking about and I thought of you. You know, one-time money is great for brick and mortar, but you can, you know, you can build something or burn something, but then, and it just stays at top.
My evening scheduling.
I did really look at it.
Why you tell these here?
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm with you, but-
By the way, with the, you know, whatever, I mean, we brought this here, making our official announcement. Yeah, I mean, if we have, if we have something to do, fine, if we don't-
Do something that's almost perfect to do something.
I mean, I wanna, whatever. Anyway, I move to adjourn.